I promise I will get back to you. And, good evening, everyone. It is 6:30, so I will call us to order. And I will read the roll. John, myself present. Sue?
Present.
Phil is not going to be here this evening. And Neil?
Present.
Mike Ahern is not going to be here this evening. Mark Sturgeon does not appear to be here. Matt Yeton?
Present.
Alternates, Zach is not present. Michael Bouchard?
Present.
Peter Julia? And Brad Puffer?
Yep, present.
Okay, so, given we have a few absences, I will seat both you, Brad, and Michael for as voting members this evening.
Thank you, Chair.
Thank you.
And we can begin with a review of the minutes from our April 18th meeting. Thorough as always. But I guess a lot happened.
It was, it was, yeah. A lot packed into that meeting.
May I ask who takes these meetings, Chair?
The notes? It's either Joseph or Avery at this point.
Yes, yep. Correct.
Which one was it for this?
Oh, for this one, uh, this one was myself.
Okay.
Amazing amount of information for notes.
Well, Avery's pretty thorough as well.
Avery is also pretty thorough, yeah.
Where's she?
An all seriousness, though, that's a concern.
I did note, and I can't remember what page it was on, David Cody's name is C-O-T-E.
I think I said C-O-D-Y, is that right?
Yep.
We have to get the name attached to the quote of the evening.
That's in there, right? Yeah. Okay, and also on page, it's more, it's just a spelling error. I don't know what page is. I think it's the next to the last page. Oh, page six. Fourth line starts with David Cody. And in further business. And? Right after that, and.
And. Got it, thanks.
Sue, you're taking my role.
I know.
Very thoroughly proofreading.
They're gonna be on file forever, so this is, this is the time to make sure we have that right.
Well, that's what John told us in the beginning, just so. There it is. It's a teacher in you, John.
It is. Has any motions?
Make a motion to accept the minutes with corrections of April 18.
And I'll second it.
Any further discussion? All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? All right, the meetings, minutes are approved. Are there any public comments not related to the business on the agenda this evening? Should credit for public comments? All right. Now I'm taking a lesson from Neil about. See, I'm taking a lesson from you now about offering students extra credit.
Extra credit? Yeah. I think that's a great idea.
Let's see. Communications received by the board.
Yes, so in the, in the stack at the front of the table, there is a letter that was sent to the board. By way of myself, from email. And it is from Danielle Sargent, who was one of the abutters present at the hearing of our last meeting. She says, "I'm writing today to extend an invitation to the planning board to come to my home to view the site. My hope is that an onsite review will provide greater understanding of the proximity, traffic, and impact to my property. I believe there is a planning board work session this Thursday. I'm unfortunately out of town Thursday and Friday this week and unable to attend. Can you assist in extending the invite? I'm available most days with the exception of days noted above." And that is with the caveat that, you know, it is a letter, it's a communication received. I would advise that the board shouldn't necessarily discuss the, an application outside of a noticed hearing on that application. However, this is a letter that was sent to the board. And the board does have the right to either visit a property. There is a statement on the application authorizing the board to do so. Or at a public hearing announcing the time of a, of a noticed public meeting for a group site visit. If it is a group site visit, there has to be a notice of the meeting. And I would recommend announcing that at a public hearing.
And we're allowed to visit the site that is under site plan review, not the abutting property. Although we have an invite from the abutter, but I would advise not going there on your own without talking to her.
That's a good note.
And as a board, we would have to have a noticed public hearing on this to actually make that happen. So we probably can't do it before our next meeting. I'm not thinking would be.
Yeah, I would say if there's gonna be discussion of an application at a site visit, the board should announce the time and place of the site visit at the next hearing on the application. So anyone in attendance at the hearing can have, you know, the time and date and place of the continued hearing. Since there could be relevant discussions taking place, that would probably be the easiest way.
So, I'm just silencing my phone, sorry. So, should we not approve or deny the application next time and we have another public hearing? Then we can talk about potentially having a site visit? Yeah. Thank you. Anything else?
So that, that would be the right time to make a motion to have a site visit?
At our actual public hearing at next, at our next, at the next business meeting?
We'd have enough time to notice it?
Yeah, as long as, I mean theoretically, you know, we could do as, as little as 24 hours notice. I would certainly say a little bit more is probably better. And then as far as continuing the hearing, just having, you know, that announced at the, at the prior hearing, that it will be a continuation of the hearing, if that will happen. If there's not a continued hearing, there really can't be any necessarily discussion. There could, I suppose, be a situation where there's a noticed meeting without a hearing, that could happen. But there's gonna be discussion and commentary from the public. Continuing a public hearing from a prior public hearing would be a way to do that.
And if we do decide to continue at our next meeting, that's our choice, not based on something the applicant is missing or something. That puts us very close to the deadline. Or puts us closer and closer to the deadline of 65 days. But we can, we can cross that at our next public hearing of the application. All right. Anything else?
Not other than the revised open space residential development language, which we have from Barrett. And that's related to a future item, so we can.
Yep.
Do that when you're ready.
Actually, do you want to mention the, I know we talked about whether I should mention this in terms of priorities and scheduling, but it seems a bit more like communication received, the letter from the select board?
Oh, yes. There was a letter with regards to appointment procedure that was received from the select board. And this was, I, thank you for reminding me, John, this was, this was received before the prior meeting that got snowed out. So this, this is sort of a continued communication. But asking that, asking basically for board feedback on the idea of having potential interested parties, interested in joining a board, meet with the board, discuss with them, and bring something from that meeting to the select board so that the select board, so they can talk to the board about, you know, the job and everything like that before approaching the select board. That was a, a communication that came from the select board. I don't recall the date, but it was prior to the previous work session.
Like a month and a week ago or something. Thereabouts. All right. Reports of committees? Anybody have any committee reports? HOP is still ongoing, and so the housing committee. And we'll be talking about some of that business in a moment, so perhaps I'll just kind of hold off till we get to the new business, planning board priorities, since there's a good amount of overlap there. And, yeah. All right, so new business, 2024 Planning Board Priorities and Scheduling. So every year, we have a joint ZBA meeting. And and we usually do it sometime shortly after town meeting, and so we're kind of in that space now. And it would be good to try to communicate through Joseph, presumably, with the ZBA. Excuse me. To see if we can make that happen and what would work at their convenience. So they meet on Tuesday evenings sometimes.
Yes, they meet the first Tuesday of the month if there is any business for them to hear.
Or we can invite them to one of our work sessions. I would not try to invite them to our next business meeting because that's gonna be chock full of stuff.
Isn't that what you did last year? Right into one of your work sessions?
Yeah, I think that's what we typically do.
I've been here long enough that I actually remember this. It's scary.
So, does that sound like a good idea? And we'll have to check in with them to see what they can make. If they can make it to our work session, that would probably be the easiest. Do we have any, we don't have any conflict with that work session, right?
So the next, well, that's another probably communications and scheduling, talking about the next housing meeting. But theoretically.
Which is not gonna be on a Thursday.
Correct, so theoretically, no, it doesn't conflict with the work session.
All right, so let's just aim for that, and if that doesn't work for them, then we'll see what else might work. David seemed pretty adamant that we keep making this happen, and so let's do it. In other news about joint meetings, we've been talking about the ESZ a bit. And what we want to do going forward with the ESZ, since this is the environmentally sensitive zone in our zoning ordinance, since the language is a bit, we could use some updating. And and so looking at that, and it's, it's been raised by a couple of people, including Mike Ahern and others, what we want to do with this, and it's a good question, and.
Up in the audit, too.
What's that?
We brought that up.
And you brought that up in the audit as a barrier as well. So the question is, like, what do we want to do with this? And do we want to amend this? Do we want to scrap it and replace it? Or what? And I know Mike had concerns that maybe we don't need it all anymore. And so that would be a good discussion to have. And to have that discussion, I also believe that it would be good to have the Conservation Commission at least have their input as people who really know about this, perhaps in greater detail than we do. And so I had a preliminary meeting with Joan Turley of the Conservation Commission, and talked about this a little bit, just to kind of get their sense of what they want to do. And I'm not sure if it would just be her showing up perhaps, or even a joint meeting. But having some, some kind of input from the Conservation Commission as we start to look into the ESZ and where to go with that. So I just, I've start, I've kind of opened that conversation and. I'm, I'm looking at the looks and I'm trying to see if anybody has any questions.
No, I think it would be good to get input from them before we make any moves, because they, they do know it. I think the state regulates those areas, don't they? Aren't there some?
So there's, there's a state, there are state regulations.
Really rigid state regulations over that.
Yes. There are also, there are possibilities for additional regulations, and they could be needed or not, depending on, I mean, how the board felt. And then, of course, how the voters feel after that if we do want to change something. And like, for example, there's also the Innovative Land Use Guide from the state. And they have a whole, like, chapter on riparian buffers. And maybe that's something we don't like, I don't know. It kind of takes some of the mandates for trees and stuff from the state regulations and makes them a bit more formalized and. But pretty much follows the state numbers in terms of, like, feet and such, which the environmentally sensitive zone goes beyond. And there's some messy wording in the environmentally sensitive zone as well. That's at once very stringent and at the same time almost completely, like, permissive.
Well, I think it's appropriate to, to listen to them because, before we step into it, not knowing everything about it.
Yeah, I think we should invite them in and hear their thoughts. Should have a lot of input.
I'm not sure exactly what that would look like going forward yet. And I wouldn't want to do the two joint meetings in the same day. And it's not really a rush yet on the ESC, but it might be something in the summer to kind of work out with them and get a meeting schedule for maybe early summer or something. Does that sound about right, Joseph, for, like, scheduling wise? I'm just trying to think this through in my mind.
Yeah, I think that's certainly, certainly a possibility. I mean, the, the work sessions throughout the summer are kind of, you know, up, to a certain extent, up for grabs for some of these things. And that's kind of the, kind of the advantage of sort of talking through some of these scheduling priorities now and seeing what the board wants to do and laying that groundwork for those.
I should have mentioned, we've been talking about work sessions and business meetings. For those of you out on the other side of the table here. So this is a work session, which is why we're, we're not dealing with applications or anything this evening. And we're looking at our own regulations and our schedule and all these sorts of issues. Then we have our business meetings, the third Thursday of the month, which is, which are all about looking at applications, like the hotel and other stuff that we've been looking at. Let's kind of get everybody on the same page.
I think it's important to touch on the ESVZ as well, because we're trying to promote housing. Things are starting to, starting to open up a little bit. More and more people are gonna want to do things. And I think if we start addressing that, I think it's important. Because there's some things in there that people are just not gonna like, and some things that they're gonna overlook. So I, I just think, since nothing's been done for a while, I think it's really important, so I, and the time goes by fast.
I agree.
So, yeah, so let's see. I know in my, in my own mind, I've been kind of keeping an eye out for potential amendments, even, you know, not housing related, like small things that this might be, need to be cleaned up. And if anybody has any of those as kind of we move forward, probably a good time as well in the summer to kind of look at those and see if we want to push any of those for the fall. Nothing, I, I have nothing too complicated in mind, but I do have a couple of small, like, things that might be helpful that we can talk about when we get there. Let's see. Community meeting. And I don't think I've actually put it in my calendar yet. I have it in my notes somewhere. What was the exact date on that, what we were talking about? So this is a housing community meeting, which some of you know about.
First Monday in June, so that's Monday the 3rd.
And so we're trying to work towards a potential meeting on that date and. Yeah, so just pencil that in if you can, if you haven't already.
For what, to do?
For a community meeting. This is for one of the HOP community meetings. And speaking of looking at our calendars, this is coming towards the close of our HOP contract. And which for, for the work closes in the end of June. And I think all the paperwork needs to be in by the end of July. And, yeah.
I think they'll actually let us work into July. It's up to you.
We, we have talked about this a little bit at a check-in meeting this morning.
Yeah, so, yeah, the key with it is that any invoices incurred or any costs incurred by the town have to be submitted for reimbursement by the 31st of July. So we could keep working theoretically up until that date, but we'd need enough time to get the invoice for that work and then. So theoretically, under the regulations, you could go a little past then, but just making sure that there's enough time to.
Gosh, I hope so, because I've been counting on it.
All right.
Would that be held at the school?
I think we have a tentative yes, but not a definite definitive yes.
It appears that the Bobcat Cafe room at the Plymouth Regional High School, the same one for the previous community meetings, is available. Tentatively, we haven't got the formal okay, but the, the sense is that, you know, I did reach out and they appear to be open to us using the space. Submitted the formal form, and so I just need that officially signed and returned before I can say that it's 100% our space, but it, it appears that it should be. No issues were raised when I ran the date by them or anything like that.
Also, a quick cluster project update. I've had some of my students do some kind of like, like sub-basement work on thinking about a downtown master plan, which our master plan calls for. And obviously, like, my students are not gonna write that, and they don't have the authority to write that. And not, certainly I could do that this semester. But we're thinking about some strategies for outreach, we're thinking about some things that we'd like to look at, and relating them to our broader master plan and and basically make some tools that the board can use going forward to kind of think about what a master plan might look like and what kind, what the outreach might look like. And so our final exam is scheduled next Thursday at 11:00, I think it is. Yeah, next Thursday at 11:00. And they're gonna be presenting for their final exam their pieces of this project. And so this is to kind of let you all know we're working on that. And, and if anyone would like to come and kind of join us and watch, you're, you're welcome to do so.
What is that gonna be?
Cool.
Next Thursday at 11:00 a.m. in the library, Lamson Library.
Any way to view that on Zoom?
You know, that, that is like one of the few rooms on campus that is not hooked up for Zoom. So I'd have to, like, be running it off my laptop or something, which is.
You kidding me?
I'm not. Almost every regular classroom, this was not, this was not originally designed as a classroom. It was designed as one of the open lab rooms or something. And they're not as Zoom-ready as the classrooms are. And so the only way to Zoom in that room is to, like, set it up off a laptop or something, which is not convenient. It's a bit of a weird shaped room as well, to even, if we could do that, like with external cameras on.
Is the room got a number?
It does have a number. Maybe, 114, 116. And when you, when you walk up the stairs, when you go in, you walk all the way to the back on the left.
So you think it's 114 or 116, something like that?
It's based on the main floor of the circulation, which is like up the stairs.
Back towards Boyd Hall.
And all the way in the back on the left. You'd be walking away from Boyd, I suppose, at that point.
Towards Pemmy.
Towards, towards Pemmy, yeah.
I might try to get there.
You're gonna get an audience. 114? All right.
Thank you.
Last up? Worth mentioning that three people in this room, in fact, are going to be speaking, not this Saturday, but next Saturday, at the New Hampshire Office of Planning Development Spring Conference.
Oh, nice.
And so there's a session organized around housing issues. And so they have, like, different, like, consultants, planners, planning board members. And it's not just the three of us, but like, there's others as well. I think there's six of us total.
Yeah, a guy from Exeter, someone from a regional planning agency. Really kind of looking at the HOP program, the HOP grants and kind of what worked, what didn't work. It'll be fun. Oh, and someone from Sandwich.
Yeah, so if you haven't gotten enough of us already.
When and where is this being held?
It's gonna be, I think, all online, I believe.
Online, yeah. So if you go to the Office of Planning Development, look at, look for their spring conference.
Spring conference.
And there's, there's three different tracks. One is like planning board, zoning board, and then housing and preservation, I think.
Yeah, something like that.
Yeah. And we're in a housing and preservation room.
Excellent.
So their director of cultural resources, I think it is, Andrew Cushing, I think is his name, is also speaking in an earlier panel in that session.
What day was it?
It's Saturday the 11th.
Saturday the 11th, thank you.
And it is free as well to register.
Is that graduation day?
Undergraduate commencement, is that the 11th?
It might be, I don't even know. Oh, well.
It's virtual. I can't leave town that day, so.
All right. Who thought, like, new business is scheduling, what takes it along? Here we are, though. All right. Any question about any of this before we move on? All right. So, up next, we have unfinished other business from board members, planning staff, beginning with our Plymouth subdivision regulations pertaining to standards and requirements for the open space residential development. So we've talked about this a bit before, and we've had a draft to look at before. And now we have amendments to this draft and I think addressing most of our concerns. And so the goal, of course, and I'll say this for everyone in the room, so I think everybody on the board knows this probably, in the Spring of Town meeting, we removed the OSRD, Open Space Residential Development, from our zoning ordinance with the goal of putting it into our subdivision regulations. Which means currently at this point, since that is passed, we have removed our open space regulations from our subdivision, from our zoning ordinance. And there are nowhere else, so we have none right now. We have a zoning ordinance that says they exist, but they don't. So the goal.
Yeah, they're, it's referred to in several sections.
Yeah. So the goal is to actually have that reference refer to something. And in the process, we were looking at, and our planning was looking at our old regulations and recognizing some places for some pretty serious updates. And so we have a rewrite of that section, which we've been looking at. And you should all hopefully have a copy of. In, yeah. Trying to get mine out. So I know it's been a couple of months since our last meeting, when we're gonna talk about this, was canceled due to the snow. Hopefully you remember some of what we were looking at, or you may not have been on the board yet. So we have, remember, what's that?
Just as a little backdrop.
Yeah.
In the zoning, when it was in the zoning ordinance, required special use, special permit?
Vary by zone, yeah.
Yeah, so by getting it out of there and putting it in the subdivision regulations, you're essentially allowing it as a right, provided the project meets all the requirements of the subdivision regulations. And it is still referred to in the zoning ordinance for purposes of definitions. And also the dimensional table has a footnote that refers to the subdivision regulations for density and dimensional requirements. So, most of it came out zoning ordinance, but the concept of, of that use is still there. So now it's just getting it into the. So the zoning ordinance refers to an Article 9 in subdivision regulations. It doesn't exist. So the board needs to, that's the completing the step is getting this in place.
So you and Alexis made a bunch of revisions here?
Alexis did a lot of work on it. I'm hoping that she's gonna be able to join, so I don't steal her thunder, but. We talked through a lot of this, but, I mean, she really put this together because my life has been nuts lately, so. I know what she's done.
Yeah, I mean, do you want to get, do you want to give us a little bit of update on what has changed since the last one?
So there had been some concern, the last time I think this was discussed, about having kind of a minimum acreage requirement in some districts and not others. If you didn't meet that minimum acreage requirement, you had to kind of go through some extra steps to justify the use of the OSRD. That has come out, so there's no minimum acreage requirement. Basically, it's if your project would qualify as a major subdivision, then it can use this, this, this tool. So that's one thing, it's just there's no minimum site size requirement to use OSRD. And I think that's important, because in districts like single-family residential, you may have a fairly small property that would actually be nice to do a small cluster on, but if you have a prohibitively large minimum tract area, then the owner can't use it. So, so that's gone. And then there was a lot of discussion about, well, how do you figure out how many units the proponent could get if they were, because they're doing a project where they could qualify for ostensibly some. Because they're doing a project where they could qualify for ostensibly some additional density if they do certain things. So how do you figure out what the base density would be? And there's two approaches to that. One is a very simple formula that says, here's a site area, you deduct certain stuff, you've got this net area, you divide that by the district's minimum lot size. That's your base density. Another way to do it is to have the so-called yield plan, which is where the applicant literally has to provide a plan to the board, kind of like a preliminary plan. You know, this is what I think I could do. So there was some concern, I think, or not concern, but just interest in trying to make it as simple as possible. So there is a density formula in here now. And the formula attempts to simulate what it's like when you have a piece of property and has some wetlands and you're going to put roads in, but you haven't done any of that yet. And how do you figure out what you might be able to do with that property so that there's a base density established that everybody's going to be working with? So there's a formula in here that I think has been significantly simplified. Excuse me. There are density bonuses in here. They've been revised somewhat from the original, from the original proposal. They total 75%. That's the kind of the maximum density bonus that would be allowed. There is a provision for mixed uses. There are terms that needed to be updated in the subdivision piece of this in order to be consistent with the zoning ordinance. That's been taken care of. There had been some confusion caused by yours truly, I am absolutely confident, about where you apply certain kinds of dimensional rules. So you have a piece of land and some of those dimensional standards apply to the site. Some of those dimensional standards apply to what happens within the site. And so the way I had set this up, I think, was confusing to people. So we've tried to clean the tables up that say, for example, what is the minimum setback between development on the site and the existing street? That's a setback for the site. Now you're in the project. How do you determine what the appropriate setbacks would be between structures in the development? So we've broken those out into separate tables, hoping to make it easier to work with.
And it is marvelous.
So that's sort of like the landscape buffer in here, like 100 feet in the ag zone? That's very, very clear. Thank you.
There she is, on time. We're singing your praises.
Hi, everybody.
Hello.
Hello.
So those tables have been cleaned up, and I think you will find them easier to work with. And then there's also, there was this issue around separation between structures. So like if you have a subdivision where it's not lotting, it's almost like a condominium, you still have to figure out how do you separate structures. So that, I think, has been addressed in here as well in a way that's easier. And of course, you know, if there's ever any real question, fire chief may have an opinion on a given site and you have to provide for that. But I think that the objective of trying to get this into the subdivision regulations and make it intelligible for the board and applicants, I think it's there. Thank you, Alexis. So at this point, I think you need to decide, are you comfortable with this? And if so, are you going to adopt it? Because otherwise, you're going to continue to have a reference to Article 9 in the zoning ordinance and there's no Article 9 subdivision regulations. But I think this is kind of where we are. And this was sort of the last big piece of the recommendations from the audit that we were going to try to deal with this year.
And with one other clarification, I know I was asking Alexis about this this morning.
Yeah.
For example, there's the language about building envelopes.
Yeah.
Which probably be a separate part of this with the definitions, because it's a term that we don't currently use. And a lot of us may know, but it still should be defined. So that would be defined somewhere, I think Alexis was saying, perhaps in a separate part of the regulations?
Yeah. So I actually, I'm glad you wrapped it up, John. I just, I had a question about that. I assume the way this would go forward, you know, when there's a public hearing about adopting these regulations, really, the amendment, as this is so aptly titled, is an amendment to your subdivision regulations, which, so if there were a couple of things that you wanted to add in the definitions, it may be that, you know, there's two things that are part of the public hearing, adding this Article 9 and amending the section that has definitions to add just a couple of the things that came up in this to that section. So I assume that would be the procedure?
Yeah, it is. You're right. You're right.
John, I, I know this just came in yesterday, so I'm not sure who had had a chance to thoroughly look through this or not. But knowing what we saw last time, those were basically most of the changes. So in addition to having the minimum acreage, there was also like what happens when you fall below that? It was a big, long section with extra steps to go through, and that has all been removed.
Yes.
So there's one set of steps that everybody goes through now.
Right. So the only time, and we went back and forth on this a lot internally, about like the yield plan and the formula and whatnot. And what we did end up doing, so in the previous draft, there was if you don't meet the minimum acreage, not only do you have to do a yield plan, but you have to do this impact statement and whatnot. And so that's all gone because there's no minimum acreage anymore. But we did still include a provision for a yield plan if the site has a significant amount of wetlands and very steep slopes. It just makes more sense to make sure that what is being proposed is actually feasible. But it's a very reasonable, you know, I think, ask. There's a definition for yield plan now. And yeah, so that's only if the site has, I think it's over 30% of wetlands and very steep slopes.
Right. It's a more complicated site.
Right.
And I'll just procedural note for the board. So subdivision regulations are amendable by the board after a public hearing. So notice of that public hearing is going to be a 10-day posted notice. And we will have to have what we're noticing the hearing on available for public review during that notice period. You know, from the town end, before we notice a public hearing on any regulatory changes, we would typically have the town's attorney just give his signature on it to make sure he's comfortable with it, which, so if the board, if it's tonight or whenever, if the board decides that the contents look good, that we, I would suggest that before that hearing is officially scheduled, just making sure that the town's attorney can take a look and give his blessing. And if he has, he would be looking at it from just a, you know, legal references perspective, making sure that, you know, he's comfortable with it.
Who will ask to form? Are you going to want us at that hearing?
I'm not certain at this moment.
It's up to you.
Never mind having you, but...
I'll be in here. We both like being here.
And one thing worth mentioning, I mean, worth thinking about, it would be good to have these on the books as soon as possible. It's also good to like do it once and do it right. However, if, after an application comes through or after thinking about it longer, we decided to make an amendment to this, that's certainly doable. And it's not as high a bar as a zoning amendment. We'd have to notice a public hearing and change something if we found something we wanted to change. And in some ways, it would be good to just like get this on the books. But at the same time, like not rush into it and like, yeah. I mean, to me, it looks pretty good at this point. I had some reservations last time around, but yeah.
Can we make a change in wording?
Where?
You're in a memorandum, yeah.
Section C4, density allocation, line 3. It's discussing sites containing substantial wetlands and steep slopes. It should be changed to jurisdictional wetlands. And steep slopes should be more specific, for example, an east slope or 60, 50-degree slope, you know?
Yep. Okay. So, so this is under C4, you said?
Yeah, C4, line 3.
So the full language is in the other piece over here? You're looking at the memorandum about?
It's about C4. It's almost just a summary.
Yeah, that's the summary, yeah.
So the language in the proposed regulation is undevelopable wetlands and areas restricted.
Well, wetlands can be developed if it's done properly. But they need to be determined.
Right. So you're saying jurisdictional wetlands?
Jurisdictional wetlands.
And then the table on page 3 is also a relevant piece to this, which for slopes, they're saying percentage of the parcel that is wetlands and/or slopes greater than 25%. So there's, what's in here is that steep slope is 25% or more is my read of that language.
Yeah. So what we can do with the, I think this would also kind of speak to where in the definitions. Right now, in your subdivision regulations, you have a definition for slope. It may be worth, you know, for that, expanding what is defined as steep slope. Because I didn't see any other reference to a specific what is a steep slope in the subdivision regulations. But because it's going into that calculation, it would make sense to include that in the definitions. And then for wetlands, very good point there. Right now in your definitions, you have wetlands, but maybe there can also be kind of a sub-definition about jurisdictional wetlands. You know, what do we mean when we say that those wetlands need to be subtracted?
Well, I think it should be jurisdictional wetlands and not substantial wetlands. But I think...
Can you explain that distinction a little bit more?
Well...
It's been flagged, right?
Wetlands that have been determined to be classified as a certain type of wetland, whether it's poorly drained or very poorly drained and then how, and what type of wetland. You know, there are several types of wetlands, but, you know, like vernal pools. And what you can do is if the wetlands have been determined to be classified and the boundary lines have been determined by certified wetland scientists, you can apply to the Wetlands Bureau for permit to modify that wetland. But you have to be able to prove that you have a need. And there might be a need or there might not be a need. But if you don't have a need, they're not going to approve it. But if you do have a need, you, there are ways of mitigating the wetland.
So what's a need?
Access.
Right, okay.
And if you don't have access,
Right.
usually that's the most common need.
Right.
And also fire protection is a need. You know, if you need to have fire pond. But the... You know, the... I just hit a spot.
I guess my, is that different in practice from the language of buildable wetlands? Because you're talking about a way of making wetlands buildable.
You can, you can, if you can work out a mitigation agreement with DES to either create a wetland in another area or preserve land, such as we did with the Riverside Landing Phase 2, you can modify that wetland to be buildable.
That part I understand. I guess I'm wondering if calling it buildable versus non-buildable in some way, in the end, ends up equaling the same thing anyway? Is there an important distinction to be made there?
Well, I wouldn't call it non-buildable. I mean...
Well, I mean, if you apply, you can make it buildable.
If you get a permit.
Yeah. At that point, it becomes buildable.
Right. There are various ways that you can, you know, what, you know, what Mr. McGinley did with Phase 2 of Riverside Landing, he's definitely going to fill the wetland, but he's creating a flood attenuation area and he's locked up a large chunk of land, so many acres, I think it's 10 to 1. And the same thing could be done on the other side of the highway.
I guess I'm not, I'm not seeing necessarily a huge difference in practice unless I'm missing something. But I'm finding either way that whichever would be considered best practice or by the attorney or whatever.
Depends on cost, too.
Yeah. I mean, you know, you could leave it undevelopable or jurisdictional or, you know, a adjective that you think is more accurate. And then if someone actually goes and gets approval to do compensatory wetlands or something else, they can always modify their submission. So I think you'd be better off assuming that that's going to be protected and divide the parcel up accordingly. And if someone can come back and show that they've received relief from DES, you can always modify what you thought that maximum number of units was. There's nothing that would say you can't do that.
Now it's buildable.
Yeah, now it becomes buildable.
I just call them jurisdictional wetlands.
I understand what you're saying. Did you get that, Alexis?
Yep, yes, I did.
Yeah, I understand. Yeah. It's a good point.
Yep. And so just to clarify, the language in the actual regulations doesn't say substantial. That was just in the memo explaining like if the site is substantially covered with wetlands and/or steep slopes. So it was just not worded well. But in the regulations, it doesn't use that term. It actually does say undevelopable wetlands. I think we use that term in the regulations, which I think an easy way to kind of address this would be, you know, whether it's referencing in the RSA what, you know, what that applicable language is for that bomb.
Okay.
Yeah.
That's fine.
I just think it's time, too, because it's, once you go to the state and you get all of that, then you have to go back to the board to accommodate that. So it's just, it's time when somebody's trying to subdivide or do something. Sometimes time is of the essence, so.
Right.
I mean, if they want to do that, they're going to know that and they're probably going to start to go through that process before they talk to us.
Well, I understand that, but when you're in that position, it is very cumbersome.
Yeah.
You know, the other thing, too, is if there's ever a disagreement between the board and the applicant, you could have a fallback that the applicant can submit a yield plan. I've seen that, too. If there's a disagreement between the board and the applicant as to what the actual minimum developable, you know, yield of the site would be under a conventional plan, you could have them submit a yield plan. And that would, I think, probably solve that, any disagreement. So we could add something like that in there. That would obviate the time problem.
Right.
It's just time really is money for the people.
Yeah, I get it. Totally get it.
And that's a lot of why people just don't want to do this because it's...
But they might do this because they get more units.
May I ask a procedural question with, so in theory, if somebody, you know, in calculating their units, they were able to reduce the number of wetlands they had to subtract because they had this plan, as you were talking about, to fill some of the wetlands or do whatever it may be. I assume with the planning board, with the condition of you actually approving the plan, be that, you know, they have to then actually follow through with that because otherwise, as Judy's saying, if they go and, you know, fill wetlands or whatever and that number drops, they could come back to you. I understand your concern that that's more time. So ideally, they're coming to you with the plan before that's happened?
And if they have the plan in process and it's not fully approved yet, we need to give them a conditional approval and...
Well, the other thing is, they don't have to do this.
Yeah.
This is an option. So if someone just wants to do a conventional plan, they can come in and do a conventional plan.
They're getting bonuses here by doing this.
Right. So they can choose, you know, people can make choices. I want to do a conventional plan because I think it's easier. Or I want to take a little extra time and get more. Because we're not mandating OSRD, we're offering it.
We see that. We see that.
It can also be a way around like the length of your street. If they make connections, you can pull it all tighter and do it on a thousand-foot street. Or there are lots of benefits to doing it.
And for these, there has to be an HOA. They have to form an HOA.
That's a, it almost always is, yeah. I mean, there has to be some entity that's responsible for the common space.
If they have a common road, it's important.
Sure.
Well, sometimes they will have a common road and if they turn the road over to the town, the HOA can dissolve. And that's happening a lot more as the developers move out, they, the owners take over and then once they get a year into it or so, they have the town, then they dissolve that HOA, but you've got your maintenance requirements, obviously, for sewer. So that they obviously, so they would have to have an HOA with this because of that factor right there.
Is it, on page six regarding leach fields and such, is it, um, DES requirements that they have the space, uh, very last paragraph, that they have the space for an additional leach field once the original one goes into failure? Or is that something above and beyond?
Geez, I think so.
Yeah.
I don't know the answer to that.
I don't think I've ever worked in a state that didn't have that.
It's a pretty common thing when you get into things this size.
Yeah.
To protect that it can always function or have something, yeah. Thank you.
And then the common open space ownership on page nine under D three E. There's some provisions about ownership and maintenance of the common open space, which is by the developer until it's transferred to one of those three parties.
Mm-hmm. I do appreciate all the work this, this.
Yeah.
It's been fun. Just reads really well this, this time through.
Thank you.
And water, this has to be on a town system, right? Public system for water?
I don't believe it does.
What? Water?
In a public system for water. I think there's actually language about that somewhere.
Yeah, there is some right here. I'm guilty. I didn't read through the whole thing.
Well, we got a.
Obviously.
And it's not her fault, it's mine, so.
Obviously, you can, you can build more densely if you do have that for other reasons, but.
Right.
I don't think you need that. Almost positive you don't.
No.
So you can have a community well, because you wouldn't, although, would now would there, could there be wells?
So you can only have a community leach system if you have public water.
Okay, that's what I was wondering. Okay.
And I believe there was some language in here about certain parts of these systems not being part of the preserved open space.
That's correct. Right. That's pretty standard.
So that's what's ringing, that's what's reminding me that this is allowed because that's part of the language in there.
Can the buffer zone be considered part of the open space, the reserved?
Obviously, why not?
That is a very good question. Um, and I actually really kind of thought about that a lot with, there are model, there are other communities where it is explicitly not included.
Yeah, which.
And they're, they're very clear about that, but this, this language does not.
There, there is language that it has to be like, um, quality usable space. So you can't just say like, hey, we're going to make the buffer our open space and like, good luck trying to use it.
Right, right. Exactly.
Which comes down to interpretation a lot at that point, you know.
Well, you have to think about like, why are you doing this, right?
Yeah, a lot of intent.
The open space to mean something to the people who are, it's going to be a residence, right? So. Um, but there's nothing that in this that prohibits the buffer from counting toward the open space.
That's good.
We had an interesting conversation about this at our last business meeting.
If it was offsite and you had an easement.
About whether the open space is accessible and.
It would have to have a setback that's adequate for the number of units you have. Wouldn't have to be part of the municipal water supply. It could be a, a community well. That would, you know, that get, it gets complicated with well radiuses. The more, more units you have though, largely the.
Even in the old.
You have to have a two hundred and fifty foot set.
It still says it has to be like accessible.
Could be done.
Not just like open space.
I would get some experience with this first. And if you think that you want to change it to do that, but I frankly don't want to make this any more complicated than it is.
Okay.
Can I just, um, one thing that I wanted to point out about the homeowners association, just to go back to that.
Yep.
I should have pointed this out in the memo. What, you know, wherever possible, it's helpful to think about what would happen if someone, you know, before it was removed from your zoning or to do this under what was previously in your zoning, because it also had provisions for things, like a lot of the things that are in this. And so my understanding, Joseph, not to put you on the spot, but you know, correct me if I'm wrong, that, that in, in the, in the, um, in the regulations we've provided you, um, it says that, you know, that, that there must be an entity that's going to maintain the open space. It could be the town, subject to acceptance by the town, so probably not, because you know, that's money. By a private nonprofit organization. Or by, um, uh, it could also be a homeowners association. And if it's a homeowners association, then those kind of guidelines come into play. And I believe your current zoning says something very similar as well. The town, it also says it would either be the common open space is maintained by the town, if the town accepts it, a homeowners association or some other entity. So I don't think it's that different than, yeah.
It's just, it's, you're, you're correct. You know, it's sometimes hard to get a nonprofit to take the open space because then they'd have to be monitoring people's backyards. So very often the open space either becomes public or it's the homeowners association. And sometimes the town takes part of it because there's some public value. And then part of the open space is left with the homeowners association. So these things kind of play out in different ways depending on the site.
Seems like there's a lot of options, a lot of ways to go.
Right, right. And that's right in your statutes too.
And as time goes on, people forget about stuff and they don't do it and things change and, I mean, forever is a long time.
But that's why you have to have an enforcement provision.
Yeah, that's. Thank you.
Yeah, I think there's some great protections for leach fields and to make sure they're always going to be functioning or when they're not functioning, they can, you know, that can be corrected.
Technology is advancing rapidly with septic systems.
Obvious.
So. I don't even all eagerly reading through this. Do we feel as though we're in a place where we could do a public hearing for this at our next meeting? And that the language is acceptable? Or some, maybe some minor revisions we want to make clear now? Or are any?
I think this reads very well. As I go through paragraph by paragraph, yes, it's a lot to digest, but as I read paragraph through paragraph, it does.
I was just going to say, I know I just asked a question, but it's also worth remembering, our entire subdivision regulations are like woefully old.
Oh, Lord.
And in need of updating. And assuming that will happen at some point in the near future, we like, right? If there are any further changes we need to make to this that we saw, we could always do that at that time as well as part of a larger overhaul of our subdivision regulations, which like, please let that happen.
And correct me if I'm wrong, any, a major subdivision right now for us, is anything four more lots, correct?
Four more lots and a road or maybe a road?
Yeah, so either one, so four more lots or lots that, uh, you know, subdivision that involves the creation of a new road.
Okay, alright.
Either one.
Right.
Thank you.
I think instead of continuing to kick the can down the road, I think it's time to get some public input. I, I, I think it reads well.
Is that a motion too?
Sure.
I'll second your motion.
It almost sounded like a motion.
Motion to put it to public hearing.
Okay, at our next, um, work session? Yeah?
That's a month away.
Yeah. We're not going to do it at our business meeting because it's like.
So that'll be in, in June. June thir, uh, June third?
Six.
And you're, and you're seconding that Neil?
Yeah, I said second.
Okay.
So the next work session's June sixth?
June sixth, yep.
What are we doing on June third?
A little community, public meeting.
That's a community meeting.
Back to back, huh?
So I will, I would ask if the board would, you know, I, I don't assume that the town's attorney would have major recommendations that would, that would substantively change it. But if there are any wording tweaks, I guess I would, I would leave that up to the board, how the board, would the board rather have the hearing scheduled and then hear any recommendations from him at the hearing and then the board could schedule a second hearing to make changes? Or would the board rather see those before the hearing?
I'm, I'm just saying, so we couldn't actually adopt with the amended language because we'd have to read public notice with the amended language?
That's such an interesting procedure here.
Is that, is that, is that correct?
Well, you could, if you have.
Can we adopt with the amended language if there are minor changes?
Uh, I would say you could, I mean, if it were grammatical changes.
Not substantive.
But substantive changes would be, I would say, a new hearing, which, I mean, is also fair to the public in terms of letting them look at it again. But the town, we could also say if the board would rather, uh, you know, we could send it to the town's attorney and if he can get it done twelve days prior to the hearing.
Right.
The board could schedule the hearing on that, but we wouldn't necessarily know if he would suggest changes or not.
I mean.
Up to the board kind of comfort level.
And it's not the end of the world to schedule a second public hearing and kick this off for one more month.
Well. If you're going to send it to your attorney. I don't know that there's a rush to have that hearing in June if in fact there's some possibility that the town attorney may want some changes. It might be just cleaner to get those changes and then post the hearing for July. I'm not trying to tell you what to do, but.
No, we're going to.
That's fair enough.
Bring it once.
Yeah, that's fair enough.
And here's the other, just to make it more complicated, if the board, you know, the sixteenth is shaping up to be a really busy meeting. I mean, but if we had a summary of the changes by then, theoretically, that still leaves the board enough time to schedule a hearing for the sixth by my count. Uh, so seven fourteen, yeah, the, that would, if the board scheduled a public hearing for their next work session at their meeting on the sixteenth, that is also enough time to notice a hearing.
So if we got feedback from the attorney by then, you're saying?
Correct.
Yea, yea or nay in terms of changes?
Correct. Though it's a, I know it's a busy meeting, so.
So we have a motion and a second on the table for a public hearing in one month on June sixth.
So just, I don't know that it's important anyway, but I know I can't be here that night. I'm in Northampton, Mass for another hearing.
So.
Mr. Chair, before, before anyone votes on that motion, can we, I don't know how clear the language needs to be for the motion, but like, it also would be Article Three, Section B, the common terms to add.
Yes.
So that's, yeah.
Yeah. I'm, I'm wondering if we're even going to get as far as like, after our current discussion. Is there, is there further discussion of the hearing for one month from now?
I guess the other note that I will add is that Rebecca did ask that there be another change. And she said that there was some item that years ago, town's attorney had recommended be added into the purpose statement and that.
Like a word basically.
Yeah, some wording tweak to the purpose statement. And I don't know what that is. I would have to ask the town's attorney what that is, so I can't. Rebecca asked the board if they would consider adopting that at the same time as they adopt this since they're amending the subregs, which.
Thank you for the reminder.
Yeah.
Oh, okay.
Board, I don't, I just, I would, I would advise if I, if I knew more about that, I just don't have the background on it.
I mean, we could in principle say yes to that right now, since it's already been like suggested by the attorney. It's a word in the purpose statement. And I doubt there's going to be any objections to what that word happens to be, I don't think. Um, I can't speak for everyone, of course. Um, but I'm wondering if we're, after our conversation a moment ago, still in favor of the public hearing for a month from now?
So we decided it was going to be stretched out into July, is that correct? Instead of having it in June?
If, if any change, if any changes came back from the attorney, it would probably end up getting stretched back anyway, unless they were simply like grammatical issues or something.
So are we going to send this to the attorney now in hopes to get it back by June?
Well, that's up, I would say that's up to the board. So I could, if the board is, if this is the language, you know, in general that the board wants to see, I can send it to the attorney ASAP and, um.
Or is it recommended to wait until we have the public hearing and take any input from the public? Is that where we're at right now?
I, I think it sounded like we're at the, we don't, it would be nice and clean not to have two public hearings. If the attorney comes back and says there are substantive changes, and we gave the public already the copy before those changes, we'd have to have another separate hearing again.
Why don't you wait till it's clean?
So do I withdraw my motion?
It's up to you.
I have, before you potentially do that, I'm not sure. Procedurally, if it gets sent out and the attorney says, nope, this looks good, couple of words here and there, you know, no substantive changes. Can we, you know, if we were to vote and move it forward, can we then have the meeting next month? And then if substantive changes did come back, we then push it back without having the public meeting or does that get confusing that way?
If you all promise to have a really quick discussion about it at our business meeting, we can make that decision then, but we can't waste any time at that meeting because it's going to be like jam packed.
Forgetting about that meeting in the middle, yeah.
That is an, that is an option though, if the board wanted to.
If, if our attorney can get it back that fast, um, which is an if. So basically, if, if you want to withdraw your motion, you can. And we can briefly revisit this at our business session to see if we heard anything back. And if we did, if we do want to make a motion or not. And if not, um, we can just kick that off in the next business meeting and then decide then to have a hearing in. So we, if you want to withdraw your, you can, of course, of course you can, but, um, and we can make that decision quickly if we, if we want at our next business meeting. Like.
So that would keep my motion.
Like, if we hear from the attorney by, if we hear from.
Keep your motion.
Yes.
I'm going to keep my motion.
You're going to keep your.
It's out there and it's seconded, yep.
Okay.
You guys don't like it, you can not go along with it.
Fair enough.
There.
And so if we hear from the attorney.
All set.
By our business meeting.
And it's sent it to the lawyer.
Yes, that'll be.
If this fails, we can decide then if we want to push it forward anyway or not. Okay. Uh, so we have a motion and a second and it's, it's still on the table. And any further discussion? Um, so all in favor of having a public hearing scheduled for June sixth, say aye?
Aye.
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 All opposed? Nay? Um, we, so, okay.
Can I ask an informational question?
Yes.
If this gets bumped to July.
Yes.
Since July fourth is the first Thursday, would you be meeting on the eleventh or would you simply have one meeting that month on the eighteenth?
I really feel so much.
Thank you for looking at the calendar.
Well, I'm planning my life ahead because if I can be here, I would be, but, um.
I think normally we would not have a meeting on July fourth and we've often tried to avoid that entire weekend in the past.
This is just going to work. It's just going to work.
What we've noticed, what's been noticed, and obviously this is subject to change, but the planning board's schedule that was sort of pre-noticed based on just the rules of procedure, has the meeting bumped back to the next week, so July eleventh.
Oh, okay.
But of course, this, the notice for the meetings does say subject to change by the board with proper notice.
If you all really want, we can have a meeting on the fourth.
I wouldn't advise.
It might not be a good idea.
Town hall is closed, but.
Some of you want.
So we meet on the eleventh then. Okay, so the motion has passed. We will have a public hearing on the fourth. And.
June.
June.
So the sixth.
Sixth.
June sixth.
Alright, June sixth. And we'll see if we have the, we'll see what happens with the attorney.
And you know, the other piece with that is if that hearing happens, the attorney suggests changes and the public suggests changes at the hearing, you can incorporate them both into a second public hearing, God. So that's, you know, that's another way to.
Fair enough. Thank, thank you all and thank you both so much.
Thank you for all this work.
Thank you.
Alright. So. And, and I should say, thank you all, having gotten this yesterday on the board, for just reading it just now and making our way through this. Which, the fact that we could read it just now and make our way through it, I think is testament to how much like of an easier read it is at this point.
Totally agree, yeah.
Update on 2027 through 2036, New Hampshire DOT ten year plan, and I think I'm going to turn this. this over to Joseph.
All right, yes, so apologies that this is a month late, it was originally gonna be also scheduled for the snow day, uh, meeting. So every two years, New Hampshire DOT updates the 10-year transportation plan, so everybody should have, like, a slide in front of you that is full of sort of, kinda confusing arrows and green lines, it's DOT's official sanctioned slide on this, though, so I felt it was the best one to give out.
We trust these people to make traffic?
No comments.
Dear God. What?
Just, so this is the slide that DOT provides to simplify the 10-year transportation plan process down to a digestible format. Uh, so, it's, essentially, we are at the top left-hand corner of this cycle, it does say fall of even years, but we're, we're starting a little early, which is good. So the 10-year transportation plan is essentially DOT's capital improvements plan, it is a political document, it goes through, uh, quite a, a cycle following this, um, this pathway, so there's a process within that called regional priority projects, which allows towns to advocate for certain projects through their regional planning commission to be added to the state's 10-year plan, and if successful, each regional planning commission gets a certain number of projects, if a town's project is designated by that regional planning commission as one of the region's top priorities, it will get added to the state's plan, and that means the state will, when they get to it, so in 12 years, 10 years from the signature of the governor on the plan, 12 years from the start of the process, uh, it, it will theoretically get constructed. So this is exactly the pro, and it's, it's relevant as well, because this is the process applicable to the Smith Bridge Road intersection. So years ago, uh, the town went through this, this cycle you see here, and got that project designated as a regional priority project, uh, it was added to the 10-year plan, and it's sort of, you know, it's on the conveyor belt working its way towards us, scheduled for construction in 2032. So now, we're on, um, 20, we're looking forwards towards the 2027 to 2036 10-year plan. So the, the, the reason that I wanted to talk to the board is because, um, you know, it's, it's, it certainly has a lot of relevance to master planning, this, this process, because there are very specific roads in town that it's able to be used for, you have only federal aid eligible state highways, which could include Tenny Mountain Highway, uh, US 3, and also US 3A, so we're, we're kind of, those are the roads we can use it on, and only for projects that get designated as a regional priority. So last year, some of the board members may recall, we submitted an application through this process to have improvements on Main Street north of Toby Road, so you, you probably can all think of this as sort of that sloping curve, uh, where you have the National Guard Armory on the left, you have the Plymouth State University cogeneration plant, there's a large parking facility on the right, you have Old North Main Street, Water and Sewer District, you cross the old Green Bridge, and then you get to Gloucester Street, the Common Man, and then you have the Route 25 interchange. So the town had submitted a request for improvements to that stretch of road, it is per the police department's crash data, aside from Tenny Mountain Highway, Smith Bridge Road intersection, that is the, the next highest, uh, incidence of collisions in that stretch of road, the sightlines are, are non-compliant, basically on that hill with all those driveways with heavy vehicles from the co-gen plan and the armory, um, and you, it also sees a pretty high volume of pedestrians and bicyclists trying to navigate that very narrow shoulder that, that vehicles are also struggling to see around as they.
Including PSU students.
Yep, PSU students.
Who don't have a good means of travel from this so-called dirt lot to campus.
So this is actually, this is actually not a, a new project, really, at all, it was first, and, and it's unfortunate that Frank is not here tonight, it was first identified in 1995 in the Green Street Plan as a priority for the town, as something to, to advocate for, uh, realigning this road and adding a bicycle width shoulder and a sidewalk, um, just due to the, the mix of uses up there, um, you know, you have a lot of forests, there's several hotels sort of on the north side of that, you have Main Street on the south side of it, it kind of links these two areas, um, it also links sort of the Fairgrounds Road area to Main Street, um, you know, the sort of downtown core, so, you know, all that being said, through the, with the select board and planning board and all the town's discussions last cycle, that's what the town asked to have added to the 10-year plan, it was ranked as a regional priority, but did not get ranked high enough that it got funded and added to the plan, so that plan was the 2034 construction date 10-year plan, um, and, and we didn't make the cut. But, things, you know, there, there are, um, you know, the opportunity's opening up again, and it's, there's an opportunity for the town to submit a request to be considered on this plan, um, it's a, you know, it, it's an opportunity for projects to be funded at no cost of the town, there's no town match, these are fully state projects, um, so really, I mean, in, in many ways, it's, it's to the town's benefit to try every chance they can to get some project on this, because, um, you know, there aren't many opportunities to get big projects done with no match requirement, and this project, I believe, has a better chance this cycle than it did last cycle, because in the intervening years, it's been ranked as a top priority in the regional bicycle pedestrian plan that was produced by LRPC, um, which says this area is one of the region's top areas that essentially needs improvements to, to support the safety of bicyclists and pedestrians, so that's another sort of check in the column, and another, perhaps points on an application that could support the town's request to have this done. I mean, it is a subs.
Also interesting, the, sorry, that was an LRPC meeting, month and a half ago, and we were getting a report on transportation projects, and they were talking about this process, and, and I'm not sure if this is a feather in our cap to look very optimistically, or if it's like rubbing salt in our wounds, but like, this project was singled out at that meeting in this slide presentation for being like a really well-made proposal with great supporting data and all this sort of stuff, right after they rejected it. Um, on the other hand, maybe that bodes well going forward.
Yeah, and furthermore, um, since it was ranked last year, Lake Region Planning, through the Transportation Advisory Committee, did advise that if no one else applies this year, they would just fund the project that was ranked last year and, uh, didn't get funded, so, you know, of course, that, that's sort of, that is to say, if another project comes along, it's, it's certainly not a sure thing, the town would have to, I, I think it's still in the town's interests if, if this project is still a priority to, to continue to advocate for it, um, because it's, it's never a sure thing in this process, but it's, it's a heavy-duty project, it would entail realignment of that road, regrading and realignment, you, that, that hump coming into downtown from the north, uh, really is, uh, you know, not, not in conformity with sight distance requirements, it's, it's too steep, and it, that curve along that steep hill just doesn't work from a vehicle safety perspective or bicycle pedestrian, so you'd be looking at, uh, basically blasting out that ledge, straightening out the road, and flattening it out, um, so that's why it's a really, you know, it's, it's really beneficial to have a, uh, some state funding behind it, rather than the town trying to fund that work.
And, and bring greater visibility to the Esquenchemucky Memorial.
Yeah, there's a lot of benefits to a project, certainly.
I'd like to make a mention, that, that road is not the original road, the original road was what they call Old North Main Street, and there was a covered bridge, uh, just to the east of where the Water and Sewer headquarters is, and in, I believe it was 1927, there was a massive flood that took the bridge out, so they built the bridge we have now, and they had to, uh, make a new road for it, to, and that, that cut off Old North Main Street, and, uh, the covered bridge was never replaced.
It's interesting how many covered bridges there were, 'cause there was also the Fayette Bridge over the Pemmy.
Oh, the, the Pont Lafayette Bridge?
Yeah.
That was a big one, yeah. I, I'd like to also add that I was serving on the Board of Directors of the North Country Council when I made the presentation to have the state fund reconstruction of the intersection at Smith Bridge Road, and, uh, we were originally slated to have it done sooner, but the governor and council bumped it back. It should've been done by now.
So that's a good, that's a good point to, to bring up, because, um, you know, there are a series of public hearings, if you look kind of on the bottom right of this slide, um, so, this says July to December of the odd year, so we're in a, we're in an even year now, so the odd year is the upcoming year, um, after the regional planning commissions have put the projects forward, DOT takes all that information and drafts a plan, which goes to the GACIT, which is the Governor's Advisory Commission on Intermodal Transportation, and then the GACIT goes around the state and schedules a series of public hearings, um, you know, and, and that's, that really is, you know, the executive council is also involved in those, and they are going to be working with the governor to determine, okay, this is what DOT has provided us, what are we actually going to put forward for approval through the, the policy process? So that is kind of a key step, is, is those public hearings where, you know, if another town is advocating harder at those public hearings, there is a possibility at that public hearing stage that the, the governor, council, and the GACIT could revise the plan, so it, it's possible to, um, that's why it's important to attend those hearings, it, it can be changed, it's not, you know, it should, it's theoretically pretty set in stone once you're in, um, but it's not impossible for things to shift a little bit, which is why those hearings are really important for, uh, towns to, to advocate for their projects.
And it's worth noting that in the midst of all of this, the LRPC is going to have a new executive director and a new transportation plan.
Yeah, so we will, I, my, you know, my general, uh, you know, summary of all this is to say, I, it appears that it would really be beneficial to the town to submit another request to have this project considered, there's conceptual engineering that was done for it, that was actually paid for by LRPC, uh, last cycle, so, and there, there's some snippets of those pages in the memo, in the, you know, the addendum to the memo that I had provided, I know it's really kinda hard to see, uh, but they have engineered that, and they also.
The sidewalk?
Yep, and they also engineered a phase two in that conceptual plan, which would be continuing the sidewalk up to Fairgrounds Road, so that's something that they envision as, you know, a, a potential next step, which may not be a 10-year plan eligible project, but something the town can consider going forward as a, to build on this project if it does go forward, because, you know, the town would have until 2036 before this project happened, so the town could consider perhaps finding another funding source for that, that extended, um, extended sidewalk, which, which they're calling in this plan, which was drawn by HEB engineers, funded by LRPC, but for the benefit of the town, um, it's, it's all sort of compiled, and they did provide estimates last year, those, or last two years ago, those would need to be updated, but the project is here, and it's a project that, you know, it, it dates back to the Green Street Plan's recommendations, I mean, that's the last piece in this packet, which is Figure 7, and that labels, it's kind of this black and white, very high-level concept plan, uh, so it, it's been a priority of the town for a while, it's shown up in master plans over the years, um, so it certainly is a, you know, there, there's a planning component, there's also a select board component to this, of course, with, um, you know, the actual funding and implementation side, but it, it's sort of a, there's overlap, so it's a, it's an interesting point in the process.
We need to have strong political representation in Concord. There's nothing harder than to get money in Concord if you don't have strong political representation.
True in every state. Would it be replacement of the bridge as well?
So the replace, oddly enough, even though they did not fund our project, which was in that area, there were, DOT did add rehabilitation of that bridge to the plan separately from this project, so the bridge, this project would essentially go up to the bridge, stop at the bridge, and then restart on the other side, and then DOT would replace the bridge probably about, I mean, if it goes into the 2020, 2036 plan, DOT would be replacing that bridge by 2034, so we'd have a new bridge, and this project would kind of plug in to one side and then come over the other side. It actually doesn't propose any changes to the bridge in this particular.
So the bridge would be another project?
It's a separate project, and, you know, it would've been probably really ideal to have them both in the same plan for the same year, so they could kind of happen as a joint project, but, um, kind of like.
Either way, it's, it's a good thing.
Yeah, the, the bridge will be rehabilitated, or at least it's in the plan to be rehabilitated.
Redesigned.
Yeah.
Really?
Yeah.
So, so just from our perspective, so this is mostly just informational, what you're saying right now, um, would you like our tacit, like, thumbs up or something, or?
Yeah, if the board would like to, I think that would be great, or if the board has any thoughts on it, I mean, it's, we're early in the process, so it's still in, you know, in development.
We need to invite our, 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 uh, state representatives and state senators and governors, counselors, and get them all here, so that we can get them right in front of us.
Yeah.
I think we should definitely move forward with it.
Yeah.
I agree.
You know, you know, flesh.
Great, so I mean, if it's, you know, I'm, that's, that's.
Yeah.
Good, we wanna make sure that it's, you know, if we're, if the town's gonna be putting this forward, um, I wanna make sure that, that there's, you know, that, that we're putting forward the right thing, I mean, we wanna make sure that there's interest in this project, which there seems to have been for a long time, but, um, yeah, that's great.
I could think of like a dozen good reasons to do this, like, yeah.
At the last meeting, I think somebody mentioned, um, getting a group together to start going down and pining away at that intersection at Smith Bridge Road, if we can do anything with that, or, I still think that needs to get a lot of attention.
Yeah, and you know, every two years, the 10-year plan is up for, uh, reapproval by the legislature, the executive council and the governor, and those public hearings do happen every two years, so really, the major focus is usually on the newly added plans, but occasionally, not often, but occasionally you do see other projects on the plan shift somewhat, um, so it's, I mean, theoretically, the whole thing is up for consideration every two years, um, and they do hold those series of public hearings, I mean, it needs to be re-approved and re-signed every, every two years, so it's possible.
These projects take forever. It's so ridiculous.
I have a question, who, who put the traffic lights in for Walmart when they built their entrance and exit, and who put the traffic lights in for Boulder Point when they opened that road up?
I believe it was the developer who did that as a part of their driveway permitting.
So there's a pattern there.
My understanding is that DOT required that as a part of the driveway permitting process, that's my understanding, I wasn't involved.
And I don't wanna reopen a, like, site plan application right now at this meeting, um, but I'll just say, this is part of the reason we're doing the traffic, our own traffic study, to get more information, to see if there are any impacts that go beyond what they pointed to, but I, 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 I don't wanna open that application at this meeting.
I don't think we are.
No, but I mean, it, it's, it's pointing in that direction by talking about that intersection.
Yeah, we won't.
Just a question.
Yeah, and I just, we were talking about going to the state to find, getting things on the, and I just think that's a, that's been long overdue, and they keep.
I'm just reading between the lines.
They keep throwing the attention to it, but they don't.
Do it.
They keep pushing it back.
Yeah. All right, thank you, Justin.
Yes, thank you, this is.
Thank you.
That's a great reaction.
Thank you.
When I worked for the town of Plymouth, Mass. in the late 80s, I was shown a plan for the reconstruction of the Route 44 connection to, that was prepared when I was a year old in 1954.
I, I think I've seen that.
And, and it was not built until 2005. So.
It's crazy.
With minor adjustments to the original plan, I mean, these projects just take forever, it's wild, wild, yes. I was a year old when that plan was drawn.
All right.
Pretty crazy. Pretty crazy.
Next on the agenda, are there public comments? This is your time to shine.
Let's hear it.
Ask a question.
It's interesting to be here, like, we'll see how, like, in-depth you guys got on all the little issues.
Thank you for joining.
Should be here when they have a real public hearing.
Yeah.
So some of the students were here at the last meeting, the last, yeah.
You have to get here early, get a seat.
Yeah, it was full, it's probably getting even more full next time.
They're standing all around.
Likely will, I would suspect.
I've heard from people.
Is there a, a lot going on at the next hearing?
Uh, hearing number two on the site plan review application for the new proposed hotel.
Oh.
That's coming up, this.
The upgrade.
Yeah, all right, um.
Motion to adjourn?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right, have a great night, everyone, thank you.
Thank you.